One and go. I call this October 12, 2021, virtual zoning meeting of the Bernalillo County Board of Commissioners to order. We will have a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Natalia Downey.
Good afternoon. Let us have a moment of silence. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Enrico Grati, are there any changes or additions to the agenda? Or Lucas, whoever, whoever is not muted.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I think Lucas is having some difficulties with his audio. His video looks great, but the audio is a challenge. But Catherine Breck, our planning manager, is here to guide you through the agenda.
Excellent. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I will give it a try. So in terms of changes to the agenda, we do not have any at this time. But as we get into the agenda, we will make some proposals regarding the three cases or the two of the three cases on the agenda.
Thank you. So then we'll move on to approval of minutes. I will move to approve the August 25, 2021 zoning meeting minutes. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Barboa. And I think we might be having some internet issues here. So all in favor? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Barboa.
Aye.
Vincent?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Malley? Vice Chair Casada?
Aye.
Madam Chair Piscotti?
Aye. So that passes unanimously. And next, I move to approve the September 14, 2021 zoning meeting minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Casada. And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Barboa?
Aye.
Mr. Vincent? Commissioner O'Malley? Vice Chair Casada?
Aye.
Madam Chair Piscotti?
Aye.
No call.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. And now for appeals. We will now proceed with the appeals and appeals procedures as follows. This is an appeal based on the evidence in the record. Ordinarily, no new evidence will be accepted before the county commission. However, in the event that new evidence or testimony is accepted, the clerk will swear any witnesses who may testify concerning it. The order of presentation and time limits, as set forth in our rules of procedure, are as follows. Staff presentation, five minutes. Appellants' presentation, 10 minutes. Opponents' presentation, 15 minutes. Appellants' summation or rebuttal, five minutes. Staff closure, two minutes. Board discussion and questions and action. Please be aware that the time limits for each side, appellants and opponents, is the total time allowed regardless of the number of persons signed up to speak. So each side will need to decide how to divide the total minutes among the speakers. This is a quasi judicial proceeding. The commission is to act as judges of the particular facts concerning the parties before it, applying existing law to the facts. The commission is to base its decision only on the facts presented to it by the parties, not on any facts supposed by it that may exist outside the proceedings. The commission is to act with impartiality toward each party, applying the law to the facts without favoritism or bias, or the mere desirability of a given result. A commissioner with a financial or family interest in the outcome of a quasi judicial proceeding should disclose any potential conflict in accordance with these rules and should, if necessary, recuse him or herself from the proceedings. The commission, in rendering its decision, should make a clear statement of what it believes to be the relevant facts and why those facts led it to its decision. Each commissioner shall avoid ex parte communications with parties bringing cases before the commission. However, such communications that occur may be cured by the procedures stated in Rule Number Four. So we will begin with staff's presentation.
Madam Chair, before we move on, if we can have Madam Clerk swearing any participants?
Absolutely. Madam Clerk?
Okay, I, my screen, I can't see who the petition bits I see has sent myself. Perhaps he could raise his hand and anybody else that might be there. And if you'll repeat after me, sir. Do you, or I'll say, I'll ask you, do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give at this hearing should be the truth and nothing but the truth under penalty of perjury?
I do.
Thanks, Hes. Anybody else say yes? Thank you.
Okay. And so is Mino Savoka ready to present?
Commissioners, I'm Catherine Verrek, and I'll be subbing for Lucas. And we're hoping that the first two appeals will not take very long because there have been extensive discussions among the parties to the appeals. And where I believe for each of the appeals, there has been resolution of the concerns, but that these will still require the commission to act on both of the appeals. So if it's okay, I will start with item A. And again, that we are hoping to move through these without a lengthy discussion because there has been resolution. So this is COA 2021-0012, a request for special use permit for public building, community center, recreation facility and park, and the specific C2 use of outdoor live entertainment on property on Isleta Boulevard. This is the West Side Community Center. And this proposal originated related to a plan to expand the community center. So it did require a new special use permit. The Planning Commission did defer, did approve this. And it has been appealed by several neighbors. And there have been some discussions which has resulted in additional conditions of approval to the conditions that were recommended or adopted by the Planning Commission. And my understanding is that the appellant represented by an agent is in agreement with these. So, Mino, can you show those particular conditions? So everything else is okay about this request, except there was a concern with the, with some of the noise that potentially could be emitted from the community center. So the appeal centered around that, not the totality of all the uses. So the condition that is being added addresses the noise on the site and how the county will make explicit efforts to minimize the noise on the site above and beyond what is normally required under the county noise ordinance. So these two conditions here were brought about during discussions between the applicant and the appellants. And it appears that this is what the, what the final product is. Keep all the rest of the findings in the conditions, but then to modify this one condition seven to add these two clauses, these additional requirements that the county will really endeavor to limit the noise coming out of the site during events. So if the commission does agree with this and staff is recommending the adoption of these modified conditions, the commission would vote to grant the appeal and modify the conditions of approval as shown by staff here. So with that, I stand for questions. Mino is also available for questions. He was the case planner. And I do see that the appellant's agent is also on this hearing as well.
Are there any questions?
Madam Chair, if I might add something?
Sure, go ahead, Lucas.
Madam Chair, this is Lucas Tofoya with Planning Development Services Department. Apologize for the technical difficulties this afternoon. I just had to totally reboot my computer to get back on here. The, our staff has been working with Parks and Rec folks to, about this issue. We are guiding them on purchasing some noise monitoring equipment so that they can monitor these events while they're occurring in order to, to ensure that they're, they're meeting the noise ordinance. And then also, we, they are going to be available for, for calls. If there's, if any of the neighbors need to call and let us know about any noise issues, they are going to be there to respond and be able to, to make quick action on any of this, any complaints or any, any issues concerning noise at these, these large events. So we really want to stay proactive on this, and that's all I wanted to add. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? Okay, I see no questions. So I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the special use permit for public building and the specific C2 use of outdoor live entertainment with the additional conditions. Did I state that correctly, Catherine?
Madam Chair, yes, that's the modifications to the conditions of approval. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Casada. All in favor?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
May I briefly, I think my clients, the appellants, ask, want me to at least state one or two things. They want to express appreciation to staff for working with them. That noise is a big concern to them. They're anxious to get a contact telephone number. And to the extent that training may be involved with, for, for staff members, they would also like to be, if that's possible, get some training with the staff members so they can be aware of how the noise ordinance works and what, just how, how this type of a situation can be worked out. Because they are concerned, and the main issue here is the noise from outdoor events. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So Lucas, Catherine, is, is that, is that possible for them to get those? And my question is, is there a live event coming up? Is there one schedule at this point? Is there something coming up immediately? Or is there time to, to work all those things out? Get a dedicated phone number and training and equipment for sound monitoring?
Madam Chair, this is Lucas. Yes, we have time. I'm not sure exactly when the next one, the only one I know of is, is South Valley Pride Day in the spring. I don't believe there's, there's any, any major events coming up other than that. But we will work with the staff and are willing to work with the neighbors to, to show them how to use the equipment and monitor and where we monitor from and how we do that in order to meet the, the noise ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Does that answer your question, Hassel?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Barboa?
Thank you. Does it appear if you could see my? I just want to ask Mr. Yatma that, what, I guess I'm just interested, and maybe folks don't know, but if anyone knows, is this, are folks worried just about noise in general? Or is it an after hours or?
Yes, to both questions, but it is a particularly difficult situation for them. After hours and on weekends when they can't get to the county noise people about, about problems. And so it sounds like the county is going to do more events. And that, my, the neighbors are, are prepared for that, but they really want the protection under the noise ordinance so that they're not listening to pounding drums or rock and roll in their dinners. How's that?
Thank you for that answer. I guess to follow up, if I may. Like even I heard San, South Valley Pride, but there's also the, where there used to be. I know we didn't have it last year, maybe even the year before, but like the Marigold Parade that would end up there. I'm sure there's stuff year round. And I guess, right, those are big, I wish we had those kind of events in my community to connect people closer. So it makes me feel like, yeah, it's a double edged sword if you live right behind there. But it's also keeping communities together. So I guess if that, those events, are they worried that there's going to be more events because of that, that they've been able to?
No, my understanding from my appellants who are not, didn't sign in to testify, but they are, are in support of the, you know, they're, they're comfortable with the center and the programs, but they find that sometimes there's excessive noise. And the noise ordinance, we understand, will protect them rather than fight this appeal based on fairly technical grounds which were raised in connection with the special use permit for a C2 outdoor live entertainment use. It seems to us that we would rather work, they want to work with the county, but they'd like to be protected too from excessive noise.
I think I have one more follow up question. Sorry. And I think this is actually for county staff. It's, I used to be with a group that would just go dance there. They'd have their practice, they called them ensayos, right? And they were, and when you mentioned drums, I just wonder if it was them. They would have ensayos every Thursday and they'd be drumming and dancing. And, and it was a small group of like 12 people, but there was drums. And I guess I wonder if this ordinance, like if they are, you know, if they're directly, live directly behind the county center and this community group that goes there and drums every Thursday for their practice, will they get the county called on them to just, if that exceeds the, the decibel amount, I guess, for the noise?
Enrico, you have your hand up?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Barboa. The noise ordinance has been in place countywide for many years. And so the, I think the primary concern with, with the, with the appellant and the community is that, number one, if, if the noise does exceed those decibel limitations, that threshold, they have somebody to contact. In the case that you just described, that, that may not constitute a violation of the noise ordinance. Just because you can hear something doesn't mean you're in violation of the noise ordinance. But in that case, we would endeavor to either, A, find another location within the site or inside where that activity could take place. Or we would, you know, instruct a user to turn the music down or make some modifications to ensure that we're not breaching our own noise ordinance. So this was really a kind of a, I thought, a very productive appeal because it kind of got me in conversations with the special events crew and the park staff to come to what we think is a very practical solution to, to an issue for the immediate neighbors of that community.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. And again, thank you, Mr. Entima, for raising those concerns. Are there any other questions? I see none. So we've had a, a motion to approve the special use permit and a second by Commissioner Casada. So all in favor? And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Barboa?
Aye.
Mr. Vincent?
Aye.
Mr. O'Malley?
Aye.
Vice Chair Casada?
Aye.
Madam Chair Piscotti?
Aye. Thank you. That passes unanimously. And so moving on to, let's see. Is this? I'm looking at, at my paper here. It looks like, oh, I see. It's a zone map amendment from MH to C1 to C1. And Madam Clerk, can I get an ordinance number for that, please?
Yes, ma'am. Ordinance 2021-19.
Okay, thank you very much. And Lucas, do you want to talk about this a little bit?
Just real quickly, that this has been withdrawn, the appeal has been withdrawn. So the commissioner just needs to, the commission needs, just needs to vote on the ordinance number for the zone map amendment.
Oh, okay. Well, then I will go ahead and move to approve ordinance number 2021-19, adopting a zone map amendment from MH and C1 to C1. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Casada. All in favor? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Barboa?
Aye.
Mr. Vincent?
Aye.
Mr. O'Malley?
Aye.
Vice Chair Casada?
Aye.
Madam Chair Piscotti?
Aye. That, thank you very much. That passes unanimously. And so now moving on to consensus planning LLC, agent for Western Albuquerque Land Holdings LLC, appeals the decision of the Board of Adjustment to uphold the zoning administrator's interpretation of the term interim use is found within the Santalina Level A Development Agreement. And so Lucas, do you want to talk a little bit about this, please?
Madam Chair, Nick Hamm is our zoning administrator, and he's going to be presenting this today.
Okay, thank you. Take it away, Nick.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the commission. My name is Nicholas Hamm, and I'm the zoning administrator for Bernalillo County. Today, I'm presenting to you item C. This is COA 2021-0013, BA 2021-0001. This is an appeal of the County Planning Commission acting as the Board of Adjustment's affirmation of my interpretation of the term interim use as it appears in the Santalina Master Plan, the Level A Development Agreement and the County Zoning Code. The crux of today's question is what does interim mean? And two competing theories have emerged. One is that interim is a short term or temporary use without permanent changes as the county believes it is universally understood and defined. And the second is a landfill, which is a forever and, and with irreversible changes, is, is an interim use as the appellant will lead you to believe today. Before we get into the details of the question, just a brief recap of Santalina and how we got here. Santalina is a master plan community. It's on the west Mesa area of Bernalillo County. It covers 13,700 acres of currently undeveloped property. The plan provides a 50 year vision for the long-term growth of the region and also outlays a process for development review and approval of necessary infrastructure to serve the development that might occur out there. The county and the applicant are agreeing to prepare for both monetary and physical infrastructure. We're talking about roadways, parks, drainage facilities, emergency services, community centers, and the list goes on. The process of the plan community is threefold. It involves the approval of a Level A or a master plan, followed by the approval of a Level B plan that further refines uses and guides development, and then old Level C plan that is site-specific and then approved by County Development Review Authority. The appellant is familiar with this process and has an approved Level A plan. They also have an approved Level B plan. As we sit here today, they have a draft of a B2 plan that they've requested deferral of multiple times before the county's planning commission. All this to say is that they know how to navigate this process. The planning communities process provides a predictable framework for development. It eliminates the need for checkerboard or piecemeal development by special use permit. It requires that the development is consistent with the master plan, the Level A plan. It's approved through a Level B plan through the County Planning Commission and County Commission process. And finally, goes through the County Development Review Authority. It involves the public. It allows for necessary long-term decision-making for development of this type. It also provides the stability and predictability to attract the caliber of users such as Amazon and Netflix, both choosing areas supported by, enabled by long-range planning. It's the same development process that underpins Masonville Soul, so there is regional consistency here. And interim use, special use permits that are attempting to be requested by the appellant are also not allowed in the Masonville Soul area. Santalina planning started in earnest in 2013 with the Level A master plan, ultimately approved by the board in 2015. There were 16 hearings for Level A, 80,000 pages of record, hours of public testimony, appeals that made it all the way to the Supreme Court of New Mexico. It's an intensive and thorough process that ensures consistency, public notice, and follows an adopted procedure. To get into the determination, Section 3 of the County Zoning Code gives the zoning administrator the responsibility and the authority to interpret zoning language and instantism uncertainty. After two or so years of discussion with this appellant, it became clear to Planning and Development Services that an interpretation of this term interim use After two or so years of discussion with this appellant, it became clear to Planning and Development Services that an interpretation of this term interim use became necessary. It really was an option of last resort as the opponent refused to engage the appropriate process, which would be the, the level A, B, and C that I described previously, or to bring forward their own application to refine the term. Uh, the opponent made multiple attempts to get on a CPC agenda before and, uh, and fabricated what they determined to be decisions by the county that they wished to appeal before this juncture. Ultimately, Planning and Development Services provided an actual determination to clarify the meaning of the term that also provided a process for appeal, which is what we're navigating through today. Uh, the interim use definition generating by, generated by Planning and Development Services is consistent with the common and universal understanding of the term. It's consistent with the APA dictionary definition of the term interim use. It's consistent with the way the concept is utilized and applied by Burnley County and other municipalities as reflected in the same APA dictionary that I referenced earlier. And there are even instances of temporary structures and uses in the building code that reflect the definition of interim use as generated by Planning and Development Services. All of that, we didn't create this out of thin air. The definition was a thorough and collaborative process of county professionals with the intention of protecting the planned communities process while also allowing special use permits for genuinely interim uses. Landfills are forever uses. They have a thirty year lifespan. They have close closure requirements in perpetuity. They are not interim in any sense of the word. Allowing a special use permit for uses that last in perpetuity is effectively the end of master planning in the Santalina area and is an attempt to redefine the rules the appellant asked the county to adopt. The opponent appears to want all the privileges of a master plan while also abdicating the responsibility of such. Planning and Development Services has already been approached by users seeking special use permits for various uses that would encumber somewhere between a quarter and a third of the planning area. It makes one wonder if the opponent is serious about the master plan given this type of behavior. The opponent has made a few claims previously before the Board of Adjustment.
Nick, you'll have to wrap, wrap.
I'll be, I'll be quick here. Uh, the Z that I don't have the authority to interpret this, that's clearly enumerated in section three. That interim use doesn't need further clarification, even though we don't have a specific definition that I acted capriciously, even though we did this collaboratively and through a public hearing process. And they'll also provide examples of other special use permits, but they'll ignore the fact in the context that these were, uh, outside of a master plan or planning community area. Uh, now that the mark, the arguments modified to state that the Planning Commission was somehow confused by the use of synonymous terms. I personally find that a little bit hard to defend. My experience at the Planning Commission is, is composed of savvy and experienced professionals that have a thorough understanding of these complex concepts. And if anyone has a, a good understanding of the intent and the purpose of the master plan, it's the Planning Commission. They were the body that recommended to the County Commission itself whether or not they would like to approve the Santalina Plan and the subsequent zone map amendment. Now, and Madam Chair, I know, I need to wrap this up and I'll be fast, I promise. Um, all of, none of this is to say that the appellant can't pursue the approval of a landfill or any other appropriate use in the Santalina area. It's a process they're familiar with. Staff in Planning and Development Services would be very supportive of, uh, development that they have asked for in the level A plan coming through the plant communities process. We've, we've entertained that before and we've, we've currently even been working with them to get a draft of a level B two plan through the process. Um, and in, in closing here, I'll just, I'm gonna, it, it would appear that Ms. Jacoby, the representative for, uh, Santalina agrees and understands the, the importance of long-range planning. So quoting from the BCC zoning transcript on August twenty fifth of this year, Ms. Jacoby stated the following from page forty-three. Wall has been working as staff testified for years to bring a self-sufficient, fully master plan development to the West Mesa. And this is intended to avoid Pete, the problems that have been experienced with piecemeal development on the Albuquerque's west side. She goes on to say that the master plan is well-beded, it's approved as part of the county's official master plan. And in order to implement it, the only reasonable way would be to map plant communities under the area because doing it one parcel at a time would just be ridiculously inefficient. She goes on to say, we've watched Albuquerque develop its west side in a very piecemeal way that's created problems. And speaking specifically about water, she states that to think, I think it's to a tremendous advantage to do this in a planned way rather than make, take it maybe a hundred acres at a time and try to develop piecemeal residential development out there, which you could go to the water authority and apply for, but doing it in this master planned way really lets them plan for the future, design a better system, implement more conservation measures, reuse lines, things that really make sense in their hundred-year plan because that's how they think and that's how they plan. And Madam Chairman of the Commission, I could not agree more. I stand in opposition to this appeal and I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, thank you. So now we'll move on to the appellant and you have ten minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just clicked something. Make it go away. Okay, apologies. Madam Chair, members of the commission, I appreciate your time today. My name is Jenica Jacoby. I'm an attorney with the Rody Law Firm. Um, and I represent the landowner, um, in this appeal, Western Albuquerque Land Holdings. Um, and I frankly disagree with Mr. Ham about what the crux of this appeal is. It's not the definition of a particular word. The crux of what's going on here today is what does the level A development agreement provide for interim uses and special use permits? And what does this administrative decision do with respect to that language in the development agreement? Um, and special use permits and interim uses are tied together here because the, um, development agreement and the master, level A master plan both indicate that certain interim uses will be done for special use permits. And so for purposes, what we're discussing today, that those are pretty interchangeable. And so as, as you're aware, we're governed by a level A master plan and a level A development agreement. Um, the notice of administrative decision changes the definition of interim use and places restriction, um, multiple restrictions on the use of special use permits within this area. That impermissibly amends the development agreement that's already in place with respect to the level A plan area and it downzones the property without due process of law. And so section six point one zero of the development agreement um, indicates that certain interim uses, um, and that would be for any sites within the level A boundary area. Um, any site that's expected to be developed with local, state and or federal support shall be governed by section eighteen special use permits and section twenty-four administrative, administration of the zoning code until a level B plan affecting such site has been adopted by Burnley County. And so the development agreement indicates that certain sites that have government support for the development will be governed by special use permits because they're already outside of level B. If there's an existing level B plan, this isn't going to come into play. But if you've got a special project that's backed by the government that comes in outside of the existing level B, the development agreement, this is consistent with the plan as well, says that we, we want to do something special with those. And so we will allow development under a special use permit for projects that are backed by the government. Um, and so then what does this administrative decision do? Um, the administrative decision does not address the development agreement at all. It doesn't address those kind of projects. It indicates that interim uses, which is synonymous with the use of special use permits here, um, must be established for a fixed period of time not to exceed thirty-six months and that cannot be renewed or extended and that cannot involve any construction or alteration of any permanent structure and cannot cause any permanent change to the condition of the land. Those are very severe restrictions and they're not consistent with allowing certain sites to be developed under a special use permit. And so the crux of the problem here is that um, not a specific definition of interim use, but this administrative decision simply contradicts the existing development agreement that was negotiated and entered between the parties and approved by this commission in twenty fifteen. Um, the development agreement, um, specifically anticipates these kind of special use permits. And note that it used the word development. It talks about sites expected to be developed with local, state or federal support. I don't know how you develop a property without constructing buildings and permanent buildings on them. The development agreement anticipated that certain sites would be eligible for construction projects under a special use permit. Um, but the administrative decision has completely wiped that ability away. And so what kind of projects are we talking about? You know, it's kind of strange to talk about government support, supported projects. Um, it could be many things. I'm not going to say that this is necessarily, um, limited to a certain thing, but I, I know it's going to involve school projects or school, school activities that could go on out there and it's definitely going to involve economic development projects. Projects that might be supported through the government to LITA, through IRBs or other state or local incentives. Um, and so when the master plan was being developed and when the, um, development agreement was being negotiated, these kind of projects were envisioned, um, and the parties thought, oh my goodness, what if we get an amazing economic development project that wants to locate in Santalina but doesn't want to go in an existing level B area. They want to go in one of these new areas that hasn't been master planned at the level B place yet, but it's in the level A area. What should we do to make sure that we can get this amazing project that, um, is backed by whether it's the county or the state, um, a local government? Um, what can we do to make sure that, um, extensive, um, permitting processes don't interfere with getting that project to come to our area? This is, I mean, it's going to be a special project and it's going to be evaluated on a case-by-case basis, but what should we do? And the development agreement answered that. The parties agreed that that kind of project should be evaluated on an ad hoc case-by-case basis as a special use permit where the CPC is used to dealing with special use permits. That's what they do. They know how to place conditions on them. They frequently place duration, um, restrictions on them that, that maybe the permit's good for five years, maybe it's good for twenty years. Um, they have the ability by statute or, excuse me, by your ordinance, but also, um, their extensive experience is that this is exactly what they do. Um, and that's what the development agreement says and that's what should be allowed. But the administrative decision now says, okay, if you have an awesome um, economic development activity that is supported by the local government or the state government through LITA and other incentives and you really want this project to come here, that's great, but to, to comply with the administrative decision, you're going to have to not exceed thirty-six months. You're not allowed to build any buildings. You're not allowed to extend or renew your permit at all. Um, and, um, I think that that's going to be a great economic development project, right? That doesn't meet any of the criteria for any project that, that I've seen um, come that we would want to give LITA or IRB or other funds to. It's, they're simply not compatible. Um, and my firm's been proud to work on some of the best projects coming to our area recently. Um, and not, every one of them involves extensive capital investment and structures. They're, they want to, if they're going to make an extensive capital investment in the area, there's no way they're doing it for thirty-six months. They're committing to twenty, twenty years or more, um, for, for some of these projects. Amazon didn't come and say, oh, give us a permit that's only good for thirty-six months. That, that, it's just not a reality for someone that's going to come and be this kind of project and the kind of project that Wall wants to attract and the county wants us to attract to this area. Um, and the problem with this is we agreed to this language and this ability, um, in section six point ten of the development agreement. And now the administrative, um, decision just wipes that out. I mean, it's taken a permanent marker and it's just crossed out that language in the development agreement. Um, and that's, I mean, bad policy, but it, it's also just not allowed by contract. The development agreement talks about how to amend the development agreement. It's got a whole provision in section eleven point one five. It says it can be amended or modified from time to time by mutual consent of the parties. Um, nothing about this administrative decision was mutual or consented to. Wall didn't request it. They didn't consent to it and they weren't allowed to give input into it. It was just unilaterally done. So what it also does is it downzones the property, um, by placing severe restrictions on the use of special use permits, contradicting the master plan and the development agreement without providing a hearing or quasi judicial process to the landowner when that decision was made. This is a taking of the property in violation of due process, constitutional due process. Allowing a quasi judicial appeal from the initially flawed proceeding isn't sufficient to cure that. The landowner is entitled to due process when a decision downzoning its property is made in the first place. Now, Wall believes the development agreement really outlines how the special use permits and the interim uses should be done, um, without additional clarification because it talks about government-supported projects, um, and existing special use permits out, out in the area. Um, and so duration, other details and conditions on what those projects should look like, um, and how they should be limited can be dealt through the regular CPC SUP process. They know what they're doing. Like I said, they, they cure conditional uses or, excuse me, special, special use permits all the time. Um, and they make detailed, um, well-thought-out decisions about conditions and durations that are appropriate to those applications. Um, and right now there are no pending applications for special use permits for Santalina. Um, and Santalina is not planning a project in the area. There's no need to go fix a problem that doesn't exist. Um, the solid waste facility mentioned, um, in the administrative.
You'll need to start wrapping up, Ms. Jacoby.
Thank you. Um, the, the pending application, um, is actually proceeding under a level B, um, plan and not in special use permit. If the county feels strongly that we need to, um, further clarify, Wall would certainly discuss and negotiate a proposed revision to the development on this topic. The development agreement also has a provision about how to interpret its terms. That's eleven point ten. Says it'll be interpreted in accordance with Mexico law, specifically interpreting the agreement as a whole according to its fair language and common meaning to achieve the objectives and purposes of the parties. The administrative decision does not analyze this language in the context of the development agreement and the words surrounding it and does not give any weight to the party's intent, particularly Wall's intent in entering the development agreement. So the administrative decision doesn't have the authority to amend, um, the contract, but it's not even using the right criteria to interpret it. Um, the decision might have been well-intentioned. I don't doubt that. Um, that we all want to see this development exceed, um, proceed and proceed as, as well as it can. Um, but it's just not appropriate to proceed unilaterally in this manner. The development agreement accords certain property rights. That's the entire purpose of a development agreement in section eight. And it has a covenant of good faith and fair dealing. That's implied into every contract and it's specifically set forth in eleven point seven. And what that means is when two parties are parties to a contract, one party can't do something that deprives the other party of the ability to perform or receive the benefits from the contract. And that's exactly what's happened here. I don't think that anyone intended to act in good faith, but that's the result of this administrative decision. It's not right to proceed in this manner. It's not right to amend the development agreement and affect development rights in this way. Um, and therefore we respectfully request that the, um, commission grant the appeal and reverse the administrative decision. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So next up is opponent's presentation, fifteen minutes.
Madam Chair, I would just inter, interject, um, procedurally, I don't know that it's right for staff to have any more time than um, the appellant did because staff is.
Oh, ma'am. I gave you extra time.
I, I under.
Don't worry, I'm keeping an eye. I'm keeping a open. Thank you for your feedback.
I appreciate it.
Uh, Madam Chair, I presume that that's, this is my opportunity to close here. Is that correct?
Um, you know, could I have Enrico or Lucas, somebody who's familiar with this? It says opponent's presentation fifteen minutes. Is that correct at this point?
So, uh, Madam Chair, that would, that would generally be when there's another party, I suppose. Um, this is really between the county and the appellant, so uh, probably a bit of a modified structure, given that it's not what I would call your conventional structure as far as an appeal, a zoning appeal would go.
Um, thank you, thank you, um, Nick and Madam Chair. If we could just state for the record, because it wasn't mentioned in the changes to this agenda, that we would be proceeding with a revised version of the appeals procedure for this appeal, just for the record. Thank you.
Okay, so, so we're proceeding with a revised version of the agenda and so Nick can, uh, do you want to talk about what, what is going to happen from here on out or, um, Lucas, Catherine, somebody?
Um, Madam Chair, this is Lucas. Um, I guess, um, I'll put it out to Legal or to Enrico. Um, do we have one rebuttal or a rebuttal for both?
Madam Chair, I'd be happy to make a, a suggestion that then Legal could, could re.
Madam Chair, I'd be happy to make a suggestion that then legal could could react to if that would be okay, so that they know my position.
Well, ma'am, I'd rather we consult our our legal team here or Enrico. Thank you. Enrico, you have your hand up.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, my my, this is a little unusual. We, this is the rules of appeal being applied to the county staff. If it is something that is uncomfortable to. Mr. Kobe, I think that we, Mr. Ham can take questions. If there are any follow up questions regarding Mr. Kobe's testimony, I would defer on allowing. Mr. Kobe to make her case to allow appropriate time to for her to articulate her concerns precisely. However, I do think that if there are any questions clarifying questions regarding the accuracy of the statements. Or some of the other items that were mentioned here, the commission can defer to Mr. Ham to clarify those.
Yeah, yeah, I I guess the way I'd like to work this is just go to staff closure. Two minutes and then we open it up for board discussion and questions. Does that sound okay, Enrico?
I think that's appropriate.
Okay, so go ahead, Nick, two minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. So. The allegation that the interpretation somehow modified the development agreement. I've consulted with our legal staff and we also have outside counsel on the call as well. Their position is that clarifying a term is in no way modifying a contract. And it's within the scope of the zoning administrator's authority, given the language in the county zoning code. I think it's a bit of a. A false equivalency to say that by adoption of this definition, we somehow preclude some type of development or remove some type of entitlement. The development agreement isn't itself an entitlement. It's part of this larger process that will ultimately lead to an entitlement, but. In no way does this definition take away uses. It simply clarifies the process by which those uses should be sought and it really after preserving the integrity of the plan. Preserving the county's ability to engage in long range planning, inclusive of infrastructure planning. Ms. Jacoby mentioned a example project of a twenty year duration. It's precisely that that turn that sort of timeline that we're talking about that we would need to engage the long range planning process and make sure that the county can adequately respond. And fulfill its obligations as a municipality. And that extends beyond the county that that gets into New Mexico Department of Transportation, public schools and what have you. The list would go on there. And I just also remind the the county commission today that this is not something that's just. A decision from the zoning administrator. This went through the Board of Adjustments appellate process. And they affirm this overwhelmingly through their hearing process. So with that, I'll stand for any questions the commission might have.
Okay, thank you very much. And Commissioner Casada, I see you have your hand up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think everybody here knows my desire and long fight for. You know, a plan development that there's a master plan in place and that. We have not had here on the Southwest Mesa ever and I've taken a lot of pressure and a lot of heat. For that master plan and to make sure that it works and moves forward. So with that being said, you know, I know that there is going to be some special use permits as we move forward and. I also have some concern about interim. Use and and you know, and how I guess it's interpreted on an overall plan, knowing that each project and each individual project will be different. And I don't know if it's something we have to do through our processes. So my question is through our processes for a special use permit. Can we look at, you know, perhaps, you know, I guess we're talking about a landfill. I don't know. I guess. I heard that in some of the some of the testimony. I'm not quite sure the specific project, but. I know there's other projects that are probably in, you know, in the queue, you know, a solar farm. I mean, there's other things that I know for a fact that would. You know, last longer than whatever the the permit is. Is it something that we can do through Burnley County and through this agreement? On how to specify. You know, I don't know, you know, what a landfill is and what what it does and how it, you know, serves the community, what what renewable energy is. And if somebody wanted to, you know, do something, they wanted to bring in a solar farm for fifty years. Well, we definitely want that, you know, we actually want it for a hundred years. But is there other ways that we can interpret the type of use within this agreement? So we don't. So we don't get caught, you know, in these kinds of situations every single time. Because look, if it's a special use permit, we have to go through the process, right? And I would prefer. Everybody go through the proper process. I think it's not a matter of that happening here. I think it's a matter of us interpreting. What interim use is and how do we apply it to specific projects? And so if you can answer those questions for me, that might help me get somewhere on this because this seems to be very. Quagmire to me at this point.
Enrico, would you like to address that?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I can take a shot of that unless some other staff care to. Here to go before me. Madam Chair, Commissioner Casada, the 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 crux of this question for for the staff was. Relatively simple. On the one hand, we have a very integrated. Master plan that considers infrastructure, transportation, transportation modeling. Infrastructure requirements, parks, open space, schools. Mixed use communities, single family dwelling attached to all of these things all spread out over about roughly thirteen thousand acres. And so. That's one of the great things that this plan brought to the area is some kind of stability, some predictability for the area over the long term. The the issue that came to us with this this request is that it's a bit of a slippery slope. If we were to, at first this began with the the term interim use being applied to a landfill. I don't think that's what's happening anymore, but that's how it came to our attention. And it's something like a landfill really really is an interim. It's quite permanent for most folks. It's stuff that kind of will be. Under the earth for quite some time and have implications for what gets built above it. We then moved on in the discussion around interim, so kind of centered around renewable energy, as you mentioned, which we all. Think is really the way to go for for this area. Things like that are excellent. But the problem was if it's say an area for renewable energy and it's a three, four thousand acre site. It kind of consumes about a third of the master plan area. Which then becomes a bit of a challenge for us because then. What does that do to all of the thousands of pages of technical documents that we? Created to help do future planning, both for this set of staff and this commission and those in the future. And it also created this question around what does that do for what we did around jobs to housing ratios? What does that do? For all of kind of the interconnected parts that we tried to string together. And and just ratified actually a month or two ago by approving the zone change. So that was the question staff had. To answer your question, Commissioner. We feel that, you know, we would love to work with this applicant both on both sides of the interstate with their property. We think renewable energy is an excellent idea, especially for those areas that are probably not going to see development for thirty, thirty years, forty years and so on. But we think that a modification to the plan or some other mechanism is probably. Something that we can do that is not going to harm the process and create this slippery slope of kind of piecemeal development. My concern is that if something happens this year and next year. Then and we call that an interim use, then what's to say in three years, something else is an interim use and we start to lose the overall context of our master plan. So that that's really. I mean, we're not here to really. Engage this applicant and while we have to work with them, but we want to ensure the stability of the master plan that we've all worked very, all of us here have worked very hard to approve. So that's my, that's my take on how to encourage these kind of renewable energy product projects as they come along. I think the staff is of the mind that it's probably better to work within the planning framework that was established rather than kind of. Touch do these interim uses in different places that are different sizes and have different timeframes, have different conditions of approval from the CPC and so on. My concern is that over years, we're going to get to a place where we don't have a master plan anymore. So just to wrap it up, the my concern is that. We can probably do all of these things, but I think we have to go back and work with the applicant on amending their plan in a way that is comprehensive.
Okay, so you're basically saying that. That we have to go back. And so so I'm. So we have to go back every time there's a new thing?
Well, every.
Just this one, right? You know, I mean, that's that's where I'm kind of in the quagmire right now. I I hundred. Matter of fact, I hundred, it's weird, a hundred percent agree with both sides, which I don't know how I could do that. It's hard for me to make a decision on that. Because there's valid points on both sides, you know, I have to stick to the plan. That's what I've made a commitment to the community as the commissioner in this district. To stick to the plan and the processes of the plan. But I'm worried that every time something different or new comes up that we're going to be having to do this. All the time and I don't, you know, I guess we still have to approve things up as everything goes through anyway, I guess through. And I and correct me if I'm wrong, when we get to the C. Plan C, I guess, is what it is when there's actually something coming in, then it comes to us and we decide. Or CPC decides whether that's adequate and if it's not, then it comes to us and that's the process. I'm just wondering, is that what we're going to have to do every time or can we somehow fix? And do it and ask and ask people and ask the developers now to go back in clarify what they mean by. Interim on certain projects and what we can do through our policies and our procedures. To say yes or no to that and go through that process and that way we only do it once. Or do we have to continue to keep doing this?
To respond to your question, that's what I thought we were doing when we approved a thirteen thousand acre master plan. I thought that we. Had all agreed that certain things would go in certain places over certain times. So now we're getting a request to put other things that were anticipated in these areas in place for ten, twenty, thirty years. And do them. Under special use permits, but to get back to your question, that the question today is really around the interpretation of the zoning administrator. And the Board of Adjustment, the county planning commission's recommendation to affirm that. So I mean, I think we can have a larger discussion about, you know, how to make this more malleable in the future. But I don't necessarily think that changing one term is going to. Create a scenario where we still have a comprehensive plan in place over time that serves the needs of the long term needs of the community, not just the folks on this meeting tonight.
So correct me if I'm wrong, the the disagreement in the word interim is just based on. How many years, right? So if it, you know, and I guess. From my understanding of the CPC, when they approve a special use permit, they could set the the years on that, right? So. You could, you know, if it's a business that has a long term kind of. Capability. They can do up to what minimum of this, right? And so we're really just kind of stuck on just what interim use. Is in this particular agreement, right? It has nothing to do really with with what we put out as. A special use permits, but what's 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 actually written within this agreement, correct?
If I understand your question, this discussion is around, yes, what is an interim use? Is an interim use three years? Is an interim use ten years? Is it twenty years? Is it forty years? Is an interview twenty acres? Is it five thousand acres? And so, you know, if we want to get into those specifics, I don't know if this is the forum to do that. But our concern is that interim uses of. Of large pieces of property over time start to consume. That layer of master planning that was approved over the years and then we start to lose that overall framework. That interrelated, that interrelatedness of of. Commercial to residential, right? Those traffic flows, that traffic, the jobs to housing balance, things of those nature, things of that nature. So. That's kind of where the staff, I think, is concerned. Now, I don't necessarily think that interim is thirty years. In a forty year plan, but that's certainly something the commission will have to decide tonight.
Enrico, can I just ask one tag on question to that? Is it just about the time period or is it about? I think of interim uses like the NMDOT setting up a construction lot while they're putting in a new road. So that interim use is in service to putting in this road and then when the road is put in. They take those chain link fences down and that construction lot is gone. So does that? Come into play in our definition at all or or not?
Madam Chair, I'll defer to the zoning administrator, but I think that in our. In his, in the staff's rendering of a definition of interim use, we looked at. Uses such that you just mentioned. Amazon, for example, had an asphalt batch on site and had a cement batch plant on site that kind of. Mobile homes for folks to live in during the project. Those are traditionally considered interim because they're part of. There are short term use that contributes to the long term permanent use. And and that's kind of what we, I think, understood to be interim. At that time. So yes, to answer your question, I'll defer to the zoning administrator if there was any clarity, clarification around that.
Madam Chair, I just, I would just add that we didn't, we specifically avoided picking specific uses. We focused on really just objective. Metrics, time, permanency. We didn't want to be in the position of picking winners and losers for the developer. We feel that that's in the hands of the free market and that that should continue to be able to prevail.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I was just talking about in general, is there, is that part of the county's definition of interim use? But thank you. I think you answered. The the question. Commissioner Benson, I see you've had your ear hand up for a while.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not sure exactly who this question is for, maybe Enrico, maybe Mr. Ham. There's a couple of spots in my. In my district, District Four, that I know there's been development on top of. Waste sites, so but I don't know, I don't know the specifications. I just know that they were. So Tanaon. And then. There's, there's some commercial buildings off of San Antonio, just. East of I twenty five. I'm not sure if you're familiar with those. Just curious. Because Mr. Ham, you were talking about this kind of being a forever project. What makes it forever like a forever kind of an untouchable site? You know, like toxic waste or nuclear waste or something versus. Trash. Now, I know that Tanaon has had like. Issues of houses settling and stuff on top of the former dump site, but or the former landfill. But just kind of curious. Because in that sense. There was a a second life to that land. I don't know if it was originally intended to be. You know. Temporary the landfills, but. But once the landfill was done, there was a second life to it. And so. Just curious how that might apply to this situation.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, I would be remiss if I'd spoken sort of technical terms about development on a landfill. I'll stick to what I do know is that the duration of the the life of the landfill being filled is. Described by the applicant in their specific user as at least a thirty year lifetime. And as Mr. Grady was alluding to earlier, that that's a significant portion of the life cycle of the plan itself. So. While technically there may be this second life to a property that was previously a landfill. It's the erosion of the county's ability to engage that long range planning process that really is most concerned. This has nothing to do with being against landfills or being able to reclaim that land in the future. It's it's about. Hindering the county's ability to engage the long range planning process so that we are. Are sticking to the agreement that both the applicant and the county had made about. Engaging these long term processes, making sure that we adequately do capital infrastructure improvement. And that we can have a real vision for the future and that we can put it. and that we can put it through the appropriate processes to be able to respond to those.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, members of the commi- commission and everyone here. Um, as you could see, it's hard to quite understand all of this, but I heard a couple of the, I did also have, thank you, Commissioner Benson for the clarity around um lifetime, like I think in any sense that a twenty-five years, twenty years, I think actually right now is considered a lifetime of a, of a thing. Um, but the um special use versus interim use. And I guess I'm just surprised and would love some clarity on like when we're talking about um, like both the appellate right, said Mr. Kobe said, right, that Pete, that this again was getting us into some kind of piecemeal, which is what we heard last month when we voted on, um, on the master plan. Um, which the passed and it was the master plan. And so I don't understand how we're um back in this place and we're still talking about it being piecemealed when I thought that the approval, that the same appellate now, um, then wanted approval of how that is, how we're talking about piecemeal again, when the last time we voted on this, as I understood that um, it meant that the approval of the master plan and adoption of it meant that we wouldn't have piecemeal. So I guess I'm interested in why that's being described as, as part of the problem for this.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Barbola, I think that what, um, that is, and that's exactly what the interpretation is intended to prevent. The, to, 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 to put parameters around what can be an interim use through a special use permit process. We are after preserving the integrity of the master plan and the master planning process. Our fear and our concern is that if, if a landfill or other twenty, thirty-year uses can be considered interim and go through the special use permit process, that we really do start to completely erode the integrity of that plan. And that I, I just don't, I don't see any incentive why we would, uh, if I'm the developer and I'm able to go through the special use permit process, I don't see a reason why I would engage the long-range planning process if, if everything with a, a thirty, forty-year lifecycle can be considered specially used. So what we're trying to do is to avoid exactly that, the piecemeal approach by special use permit. We're trying to preserve the master planning process, the plan communities process.
Thank you, Nick, and um, if I may, one more question, um, Terrence Cody. I, um, right, the, I guess I also want clarity, like I've heard the landfill and I think that's what I originally understood this to be about a landfill. And I think to Commissioner Kassada's point that it does make a difference to me and uh maybe there would be a different fight for special use if it was something like a solar garden because that is special, especially in these times. And I don't know if that's the definition of it, so I don't need you to go down that road. But, but a landfill both to me would have to take a lot more consideration, whether it's part of the plan or the special use or interim, right? Because there's an effect down, downhill, we've seen that across in many places, right? But specifically here in New Mexico and San El de Fonso being at the bottom of Los Alamos and then, and the labs. We've seen that in many, like when you're at the bottom of a hill of a landfill, that also makes a difference to the community living, to our whole valley, right? Um, and so I guess I, um, is this, is there clarity that is this and for a landfill? It is today's conversation for a landfill, no?
I'm, I'll defer to Mr. Grady, go ahead.
Oh, uh, Madam Chair, Commissioner, today's discussion is really not necessarily about a landfill. It's not necessarily about uh renewable energy or solar arrays or it's really kind of about the, the definition of the term interim. And can an interim use be extended to a lifetime, in some cases beyond, or close to the lifetime of the actual plan? Uh, and it's really about the um, the position that the zoning administrator took with regards to that position and the decision that the County Planning Commission made with regard to that decision, whether you all feel it's appropriate.
Thank you, that is so much clearer with all the discussion. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you. And, you know, I would just like to state for the record, just to clarify that on August twenty-fifth, we did not vote on the master plan that that had been approved in twenty fifteen. And so there was nothing that we did on August twenty-fifth that affected the master plan. That was a done deal in twenty fifteen and was never in question. So I just wanted to clarify that. Um, I think there's, it's, it's very complex. There may have been some confusion around the wording, but the master plan was never up for a vote on August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. Um, Commissioner O'Malley.
Thank you. Um, can you hear me okay? No headset, so it's really awkward.
You're good.
Very, very attractive. Um, just, uh, I just wanted to say, so the, the, um, uh, there, there was uh some testimony earlier by the legal representative, representative for the landowner. Basically saying that there was downzoning and this was the taking and other things like that. Uh, this, this particular, and, and if you could respond to this, either Nick or Enrico. A, a master plan is not a static thing. It can be changed, it can be amended. And the owner has the ability to do that, though our process allows for amending a plan. It, but it's a process and I think it's very important that we uphold our process so that there is a fair playing field. Uh, it's not trying to go around something, it's, you know, and if, and if there's a um, uh, request that makes sense, that is actually uh something that the community can support or uh, the, is, is approved, I mean, I don't, that's not, I don't think there's a, an issue here. I think that, that the developer has a right to, and, and it, and there's a structure in place to amend a plan. Uh, it's not about what it is either. That comes later. Uh, and so I really think it's important that we uphold our processes. Uh, of course, you know, but solar farms are, are, you know, something that are, a lot of the people think are good things. I do, I, but that's not what this is about. This is about our process. Do you, we allow folks to come and go down through the back door and say, okay, well, we can amend the plan because this is our definition of an interim use. Uh, so therefore we don't have to go through the regular process. Is that fair? Is that fair to other people who have worked hard to create master plans? And this one has taken a lot of resources, uh, this particular plan. So, um, you can amend a plan, you just have to justify amending. And that process is in place. There's been no taking, there's no, been no downzoning as a result. Uh, so, um, I just want to make that statement, that there, they have the ability to change a plan. They just need to go through our process. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay, I am not seeing any other questions. And so, um, let's get back to the, the wording here. Um, I guess I will just go ahead and, and make a, a motion and I, I try to, I've learned to try to um, phrase these in the affirmative, otherwise negatives get kind of complicated. So, um, oh, Mr. Jacoby, would you like to address some, a question that was here? Or without adding anything new to the argument?
I would actually request to add something new to the argument because, um, we haven't done the rebuttal section of the, um, of the hearing for, for the. Um, I know this is, this is, um, a little off, offbeat because the, um, county is both the staff and the applicant here. And I wouldn't object to the county having more time for the response. At this point, I thought each party should have fifteen minutes total. We did the original presentation, we, we had the response and um, the rules provide for a rebuttal period and so I, I would request that, please, thank you.
Okay, go ahead. You have five minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I, I really appreciated the questions that were asked. Um, and I think it raised a lot of good policy concerns that are, um, to be considered here. Because the applicant is concerned about being able to bring amazing one-time projects that might simply be located outside of a current level B area. And the concern we're hearing from the county is that, oh my gosh, this could be the exception that swallows the rule and everything will be done on a special use permit and there's reasons that that would be bad. Oh, okay, both, both sides have good policy considerations here. What are, what are you supposed to do? One side's not supposed to unilaterally make a declaration about their, um, development agreement and make amendment to it. Um, parties should just get together, work out those different concerns, address those unintended consequences. Cause you see that in legislation, you present something great, um, that you think is perfect. And then as you start debating it and deliberating it, uh, you realize that maybe some amendments would make sense. You come out with a better product at the end. This isn't, um, just something random in the, the zone code that the administrator should go change. This is something that's subject to a development agreement between two parties who negotiated it in good faith and in detail. I appreciate that Mr. Ham sought legal advice on this, but I strongly encourage the commissioners to seek their own and to ask the question. Um, is this administrative decision as written imposing these conditions, not just the thirty-six months, which is really, really short, but not allowing any buildings to be constructed, not allowing any permanent impacts to the land? And not allowing any renewals or extensions of permits? Is that really consistent with the language in the Development Agreement, Section six point ten? That, um, allows and actually says shall, it requires that we go through a special, special use, um, permit process for those certain projects that are backed by a local, state or federal government. Um, and so maybe the parties need to sit down and talk about what projects those are because I don't think that those are the exception that swallow the rule and cause piecemeal development out here. I think that those are the special projects that we want to have some flexibility to address. The problem is the process by which this one, one, excuse me, came about. It wasn't a back and forth, it wasn't something where the party sat down and amended the development agreement the way it should have been done. It was done unilaterally. Um, this isn't clarifying, this is an out-and-out modification. It's preventing projects that are allowed under the development agreement right now. Um, and it's not a landfill. If we don't have a particular project in mind, we're hoping to bring you a great project that will be the new Amazon or the new economic development, um, project that, um, is gonna just blow people's minds. Um, and be able to say, this, this is why we had this exception built into the development agreement. But right now, no one's got a specific project, the county or us, we're trying to plan for the unknown. But we should be doing that together and cooperatively, not to create unintended consequences. We're not asking for additional rights or changes to the plan or the development agreement right now. We're asking you not to affect the existing rights under the development agreement because it's not been done in a legal manner um, to deny and take away rights that are currently in the development agreement. And so I would urge you to grant the appeal, um, reverse the, um, the, the decision. Um, and if you think that we really need clarity on this, tell the parties to go talk to each other. Cause I think that everyone's working in good faith to try to come up with something good here. Um, and, and we should get on the same page about it. And so I, I appreciate you listening to both of the parties here and really thinking about what the development agreement says and what we want to see out here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jacoby. Um, so I appreciate the commissioners' questions and discussions, staff, and thank you, Ms. Jacoby. And so I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to uphold the zoning administrator's interpretation of interim use and deny the appeal. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Malley. Um, all in favor? And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Barbola.
Aye.
Mr. Benson. Commissioner O'Malley.
Aye.
Vice Chair Kassada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Piscotti.
Aye. And so that, thank you, so that passes to uphold the zoning administrator's interpretation of interim by four to one. Thank you. And so our next zoning meeting will be Tuesday, November ninth, twenty twenty-one at three P M. And if there's no other business, this meeting is adjourned. Have a good evening.